You ready, Momon?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome Harrisburg City Council Public Hearing. Today is June 16, 2020. I'm calling this meeting to order at 5:30 PM. It is a public hearing tonight. Ms. Houston, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allitt?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present.
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Madsen?
Here.
Mr. Majors? President Williams?
Present. Thank you, Ms. Houston. Moving on to the public hearing. Tonight, we have three bills that will be discussed tonight, Bill Four, Bill Five, and Bill Seven of 2020. Anyone who would like to speak has to be sworn in before speaking by Shanny, who is our court stenographer. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Ms. Ball.
Thank you, President Williams. Before, I guess we jump right in, since Jeff Knight is going to be discussing two of the bills, if the court stenographer would go ahead and swear Mr. Knight in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Shannon. And here, I guess we're going to start off with Bill Four. Ms. Houston, if you could please read that into the record, the caption, please.
Bill Four of 2020 is an ordinance vacating and striking from the official map of the city of Harrisburg, South 14th Street, within the block bounded by Magnolia Street and Cloverly Terrace pursuant to Chapter 3-109 of the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you. And I'd like to introduce into the record what I've marked as City's Exhibit One, which consists of Bill Four of 2020, along with an attachment, which is a map showing the portion of 14th Street to be vacated. This information is available to the public on the city's website. Since this is a city request, there is no petition to vacate the street. This is essentially a technical cleanup related to the sinkhole that opened up on 14th Streets. The city had acquired all of the properties in the area, and the street no longer exists. So this is just really, like I said, technical cleanup so we can have record of the street being vacated, and we can get it off of the city map. Then I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Council members, are any questions regarding Bill Four? Okay. No additional questions from anyone? Alrighty. Thank you, Ms. Ball. I don't think anybody has any questions about Bill Four. I think it's just a simple bill that we already know, that we know that the sinkhole existed on South 14th Street, and we know there's going to be a green space area. So I think everybody's in agreement that, you know, there's no need for it to be a street. There would be no pedestrian traffic going that way as well, right?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to Bill Number Five. Ms. Houston, if you would please read that caption into the record.
Bill Five, 2020, is an ordinance vacating and striking from the official map of the city of Harrisburg, the portion of Schoolkill Street from eastern side of North 7th Street to the western side of Norfolk Southern Railroad tracks pursuant to Chapter 3-109 of the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg.
And at this time, I'd like to introduce into the record what's been identified and marked as City's Exhibit Two. Exhibit Two is a true and accurate copy of Bill Number Five of 2020. It consists of the street vacation information sheet and the petition, which has been signed by the applicant, Mr. Jonathan Hudson. Additionally, it includes a survey of the area of Schoolkill Street to be vacated. There is the review sheet attached from Capital Region Water. And there's the review sheet from Dolphin County Planning Commission, the Planning Bureau's case report. And last but not least, the resolution of the Harrisburg Planning Commission recommending approval of the street vacation. At this time, Mr. Knight, if you want to go ahead and give a synopsis of the Bill Number Five.
Sure. The current bill before you, as Tiffany has noted, is a vacation of the small stretch of Schoolkill Street east of North 7th Street to the railroad tracks. This vacation is necessary to effectuate the consolidation of the lot and eventual development of that consolidated lot by the Hudson Companies for the purposes of a state office building. The land development plan to which is attached was approved by the city council at their April 28 meeting of this year. So this is kind of tying up the rest of the loose ends so that the final land development plan is recorded in its entirety, and the lot can be consolidated. The Planning Bureau and Planning Commission both recommended that the street vacation be approved with the following comments, conditions, sorry, that the applicant will work with Capital Region Water to execute an easement agreement to allow access to and maintenance of the existing sewer line running along this right-of-way. And that the right-of-way will provide ingress and egress to one of the accessory parking lots on site, and that the city engineer has requested that the entrance to the new parking lot be developed in a manner that is more akin to a driveway than a street cut. And the applicant, to my knowledge, has worked with the city on both, and CRW on both of those conditions. And thus, they have met the conditions imposed by, or the conditions included in the resolution of the Planning Commission. So at this time, I can introduce Mr. Jonathan Hudson with the Hudson Companies as the main applicant of the project. He's with us tonight, and I'll let him fill in any additional information or updates on this particular application.
And Mr. Hudson, prior to speaking, if we can have you sworn in by the stenographer.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here, and thank you for organizing this meeting tonight. As far as adding additional details to the synopsis given by Mr. Knight, he did a great job covering the details there in regard to the street vacation. So I do not have anything further to add other than we're very excited for the project that we are developing in the city of Harrisburg, and have worked very well with both the zoning and planning commission thus far, and also with the city council, and are very appreciative of that. As said, all other approvals for this project that have been sought after have been approved and have been secured by our company, and this street vacation is more a matter of tying up the last loose end there. We worked with the city engineer and Mr. Knight's office as well to ensure that we can abide by any of the conditions that were asked of the Hudson Companies and asked of our project. So we did actively make any changes to our plans needed. And I do not have anything else to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions, whether it is about the project, about our company, or whether it is about the specific street vacation, if anybody would like to ask any.
Council members, any questions at this time? Okay. Mr. Hudson, how are you? This is President Williams.
Hello.
If there's no relevancy for the Schoolkill Street corridor to have, just to be on paper or on the map, why is it necessary to remove that from the official map? Because actually, you have no access to anything anyway. It just goes across a, like you indicated, a surface parking lot.
Yeah, so, you know, the streets that's currently, there is no street there. You're correct. It's kind of what some people would reference as a paper street. On paper, that street is there, and for us to consolidate the lots as we are, we took about nine parcels that were previously owned by the D and H Corporation, and we are consolidating those lots into one and developing the property on there. So really, it's a necessity for us to have that street vacated, just knowing that our building and our development is going on that site, and that we actually will have a parking, will have a parking lot where the current paper street is. So although that nobody has seen it as a street for quite some time, you know, just for the legality of that and for the consolidation, that's why we need to vacate the street.
Okay. Any other questions, council members, that you may have? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hudson.
Thank you, President Williams. I appreciate it.
Ms. Ball, I would turn it back over to you.
Thank you. And the last bill that's up for discussion this evening is Bill Number Seven of 2020. Ms. Houston, if you could please read that into the record.
Bill Seven of 2020 is an ordinance amending Chapter 7-307.3 entitled Development Standards of the Zoning Code of the City of Harrisburg by removing density restrictions in the residential low-density RL and residential medium-density RM zoning districts, and amending the minimum lot area calculation for the commercial neighborhood CN zoning district.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to introduce into the record what I have marked as City's Exhibit Three. Exhibit Three consists of a true and accurate copy of Bill Number Seven of 2020. Additionally, it contains the zoning code amendment application signed by the planning director, Jeff Knight. And what else is in here? Also contained in the exhibit is the review by the Dolphin County Planning Commission, the Planning Bureau's case reports, and last but not least, the Planning Commission's resolution recommending approval of the zoning code amendment. And Mr. Knight, at this time, if you would like to give a synopsis of Bill Seven.
Sure. So the history of this bill is, actually goes back a little further than just this current application. As council may remember, there were a couple efforts over the last couple of years to address this particular issue. The first one was in, I think, May of 2018, when the application was put forward to remove the conflicting aspects of the residential low-density and residential medium-density zoning districts, and then to completely rescind the density requirement for the commercial neighborhood zoning district. That did not end up getting passed, and so at the end of that year, that legislation died. And then last year, at the end of the year, that was brought forth again, but it likewise did not get passed. And so the legislation died again. And what the Planning Bureau really took from both of those efforts was that both the Planning Commission and the city council wanted to see a bit more of a nuanced approach to this particular issue. I know one, a couple of the concerns brought up by the Planning Commission were, one, just concerns about properties within the CN district specifically becoming maybe too dense as far as too many units going into them, and maybe having something of a rooming house type quality, although we do have separate regulations for those types of uses as well, that would still be on the books. And the other concern was the issue of parking, and with the additional number of units, perhaps bringing in more households, more individuals, and that would bring more cars to a, to what are relatively dense neighborhoods, as the CN district tends to be downtown or in commercial corridors throughout the city. And so, taking that, taking that feedback to heart and kind of understanding that perhaps a smaller step would be best, the Planning Bureau is moving forward with a proposal to reduce the density regulation in the commercial neighborhood district from 1,200 square feet of lot area to 900 square feet. The current application does still completely rescind the density ranges in the residential low-density and residential medium-density district. They're conflicting with, there are basically two standards of density in both of those districts, and the density ranges are somewhat nonsensical and kind of conflict with each other, and we haven't really used those in reviewing projects under this current zoning district. So those changes, there should be no apparent difference in how the zoning code is enacted or in how development goes forward in those districts. But with the change to the commercial neighborhood district, there will be probably maybe one, maybe two additional units that might be permitted by right in districts that are, or in properties that are in the commercial neighborhood district. So it will not completely open those up to however many units can be created in those properties, but it will kind of slightly loosen that regulation, and the hope is that by loosening that regulation and allowing more units by right, the units that are created will be lower cost because there will be more of them within an existing property, which means the costs of development or rehabilitation can be spread over more units. And the cost to go through the zoning review process, whether that's the development of plans or hiring legal counsel, will also likewise be obviated. So that will hopefully result in more affordable units for properties within the CN district.
Any questions, council members, at this time?
Yes, I have a question and a comment.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bowers.
Thank you, President Williams. My question, Mr. Knight, I received actually from a resident. And I know we've been talking about it repeatedly, probably every week, but I just wanted to have something on record in reference to the comprehensive plan. The question was, what is the status of the comprehensive plan? And I guess, does something need to be finalized there before taking any action with Bill Seven?
So the status of the comprehensive plan is that the document is still in the review stage by the Planning Commission and still being finalized by the consultant. We are still intending on going forward with kind of a two-phased public engagement process with that, whereby we will be having Zoom webinars to cover two chapters a week, and the schedule is going to be pretty much the same day every week for four weeks in a row. So it'll be like Wednesday from 6:30 to 7:30, 8 o'clock, for four weeks in a row to cover kind of the basics of the document, why the why the information that's in there is in there, how it relates to the input that the public gave us during the initial public engagement phase, and kind of how it all kind of ties together and reinforces itself. And then after that, the Planning Commission will vote on a resolution to present you all, the city council, with the document, at which point the at least 40, the 45-day MPC period will go forward, will begin, and it's at least 45 days. It can be longer. And during that period, all the public comments that are submitted will actually be submitted to you all as city council. And then where it goes from there, after that 45 days, is really up to the council, whether they want to review all that and kind of work that into the document and figure out how to do that, or whether they want to send it back to the Planning Commission to incorporate the comments that they've received. So that's where we are as far as the document is concerned. With respect to how a, how an amendment like this impacts that, I think it probably actually gets us closer to where that document will have us go. The comprehensive plan itself will not be the zoning code. It will be a more general guidelines to say, here is how a zoning code, here is, here is the vision of the city that a zoning code should implement through its legal status. And so I think what we'll see in that is a focus on creating more different types of housing units and more affordable housing units. You know, that's probably, affordability is certainly like the biggest need that the public expressed from a housing perspective. And so encouraging more affordability and, you know, encouraging different types of housing units is something that will be in the zoning code that comes out of the comprehensive plan. So whether that zoning code looks similar to what we have now as far as the kind of regulatory structure, or whether it's something more like a form-to-base zoning code, which is focused on making sure building massing and configuration and things like that are consistent across the city and kind of allowing more different types of uses within them, or it's more structured like what we have now, we don't know yet. That's, that we'll still have to develop that zoning code out of that. But I do believe that this particular amendment moves us towards that goal of encouraging more housing unit development, which should bring down prices or at least prevent prices from rising as fast as they would otherwise.
Thank you for clarifying that. And my comment was just simply that I would urge my colleagues to support Bill Seven. The concept of bonus density isn't new, but it would be new to the city of Harrisburg. And it's currently effectively utilized in Lancaster and Pittsburgh, Austin, Texas, and Los Angeles, California. So as Mr. Knight mentioned, it is a useful tool to create more affordable housing. I know that that is a priority for all of us. So thank you again for clarifying, Mr. Knight.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Ball?
Yes, were there any other questions or comments from council?
Mr. Madsen?
Thank you. I noticed in the Planning Commission's comments in Section Three, it says, "While there may be concerns about density or types of units created such as a rooming house, the Planning Bureau notes that any properties impacted by these amendments would still be the subject to the use and specific criteria regulations in the zoning code." Mr. Knight, would you mind just kind of touching on the rooming house piece? And just for the record, what that section means, what the Planning Bureau was trying to note there?
Yeah. As I noted kind of in the introduction, I think one of the concerns expressed by the Planning Commission was that, at least with respect to completely removing the density regulation, is that we'll get people buying houses and chopping them up into rooming houses and sticking as many people as they can with the kind of associated concerns about overcrowding or parking issues. And what, what the purpose of having that aspect of the case report and of the resolution was, is to note that even with relaxing the density regulations, there are other regulatory aspects of the zoning code that this will not say make rooming houses more more likely, because we have other things that regulate the rooming houses, such as how many rooms you can have per bathroom, ADA accessibility, requiring owner occupancy of those types of uses. So that was more a way to alleviate the concern that this would lead to de facto or informal rooming houses. It should also be noted that the units, as discussed and as considered in the zoning code with respect to what we're talking about in this amendment, involve things like a bedroom, a bathroom, and then a kitchen kitchenette. So they're actually like an official unit, whereas something like a rooming house is one bedroom with multiple, or one bedroom per person with multiple bedrooms or people sharing bathroom facilities or kitchen facilities or something. So it is, it was meant to differentiate the maybe concerns about what relaxing the density might mean versus what the regulation of those types of uses actually is.
Okay. Thank you for that. That's it for me.
Okay. Any additional questions?
Yes. This is Shemaine. Sorry, I'm having trouble hearing. And I had trouble opening the documents. So Jeff, could you kind of break down the distinction between what we've been currently doing when it came to the conflicting guidance?
So with respect to, it's like what you're talking about with respect to the low-density and the medium-density districts. So in the low-density district, our Section 7-307.3 of the zoning code says that there must be 5,000 square feet of lot area per dwelling unit. But it also says four to eight dwelling units per acre. Essentially, what that means is you couldn't have one dwelling unit per acre under that range regulation. And of course, that doesn't really make sense because that's a low-density regulation. And it also says otherwise that you can have, you know, one, one unit per 5,000 square feet of lot area. So those kinds of two aspects of that section of the zoning code are in conflict. And it's similar with the medium-density residential, where they have 1,500 square feet of lot area per dwelling unit, or 18 to 20 dwelling units per acre. And so I had tried to, when I first noticed this conflict, I don't know, back in maybe like 2016 or 2015, I had reached out to some of the former Planning Bureau staff here that had worked on this document back in 2008 to 2010. And basically, what I heard from them was that was left in there accidentally. So it was kind of almost a leftover portion of the zoning code, and it was one of those things that just needs to be cleaned up through a zoning code amendment action like we're taking, like we're, you know, presenting tonight. It was just kind of left over within the zoning code and wasn't meant to be included there initially.
In the meantime, which one have? Which?
We've used the 5,000 square feet for low-density, which we haven't gotten a whole lot of either rehabilitations or new construction in our low-density districts, and we don't have too many of those in the city. But we've been using the 1,500 square feet of lot area per dwelling unit in the residential medium-density. And by that, I mean both the Planning Bureau and how it's communicated to applicants, but also in the zoning hearing board and how they have reviewed and regulated requests.
And then in the adjustment to the density amount, do we have language in there? Are we, do we have language in there that creates or mandates or affordable housing? Because I don't want us, I don't want us to like give on density if we're not getting affordable housing.
Right. So the affordable housing, I believe, would likely be more... So you're right, this does not address specifically affordable housing. I believe that any regulation or legislation to create something like that, which I know the administration and city council are both working on and interested in doing, would apply to the subdivision and land development ordinance. So it wouldn't necessarily apply to the zoning code. It would apply in that development ordinance for when you guys were reviewing land development plans. This amendment does not preclude council from from attaching affordable housing regulations or standards to future land development plans under this zoning code. So there's still the 900 square feet, for example, in the commercial neighborhood district, and council could choose to say if you make 10% of the units affordable to 80% of average median income in the city, then we'll reduce that to 600 square feet of lot area per dwelling unit, or whatever you'd like to do. So this, this does still keep, it does not, it does not rescind that density regulation, and it does still keep an avenue for council to provide developers with a bit of a, you know, carrot as far as promoting affordable housing units.
And that's, that's it for me.
Okay. Any other additional questions, council members? Okay. Ms. Ball? I think that's the end of the hearing at this point. Now we can open up for public comment. Charan? Ms. Houston?
Yes. There was no public comment emailed to us. Momon had mentioned that there was one caller. If there is a public, a resident on the line, if they could please identify them. If there is a public, a resident on the line, if they could please identify themselves.
And they would identify themselves by using star nine on their phone? If you hit star nine, it'll raise your hand and it'll alert us that you want to make a comment?
Yes, the number ending in one four six one, you are unmuted. If you would like to identify yourself?
Oh, my God.
Yes, we can hear you. If you'd like to make a public comment, please do so, or please first identify yourself.
Momma, they have to be sworn in before speaking.
Yeah. But yeah, if one four six one, if you would please identify yourself?
Okay, I believe there's no public comment then at this.
Okay, okay. Since there's no public comment, then I ask for an adjournment at this time. Have a motion to adjourn, please.
No move.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Meeting, public hearing for Harrisburg City Council is now adjourned. Council members, we will return at 6:30 and we will go into the Harrisburg City Council work session at that time.
So as we were taking a 30 minute recess?
Yes.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take care. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. See you in a, see you in 30 minutes.
Okay. Is anyone, Mr. Major's coming tonight. Ms. Houston, do you know if he's coming this evening?
And Madam President, just so you know, we are still live and we'll just keep it on this screen here.
Okay.
Until 6:30.
Thank you.
Hello to all who've joined, we'll be starting shortly.
Tiffany.
Yes.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Nice to meet you.
Hello to all who've joined, we'll be starting shortly.
Tiffany.
Yes. Good, how are you?
Nice to meet you.
Hello to all who've joined, we'll be starting shortly.
Tiffany.
Yes. Good, how are you?
Nice to meet you.
Hello to all who've joined, we'll be starting shortly.
Tiffany.
Yes. Good, how are you?
Nice to meet you.
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 Hello to all who've joined, we'll be starting shortly.
Tiffany.
Yes.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Nice to meet you.
Hello to all who've joined, we'll be starting shortly.
Tiffany.
Yes.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Nice to meet you.
[Inaudible]
[Inaudible]
Tiffany.
Yes.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Nice to meet you.
[Inaudible]
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 President Williams, we are ready whenever you are. I can just stop sharing the screen whenever, whenever you like.
Unmuted. Okay, so then.
And then can you show your video as well?
Oh, start videos?
Right, where it says start video so everyone can see you.
He said the host has stopped it. The host says, it's, yeah, it's Momon.
Oh, okay, well, we're ready there. I'm gonna hang up.
Well, wait a minute, you said start, okay. Okay, thank you, Momon.
Yeah, no problem. We're, we're ready whenever you are.
Okay, thank you. Good evening and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Work Session. Today is Tuesday, June 19, 2020. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. At the present time, we'll move on with the committee business. We'll start off with Parks, Recreation and Riskman Committee. Ms. Houston, please read that into record for Ms. Daniels.
Resolution 36 of 2020 is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Greenways Trails and Recreation Program for $250,000 for the purpose of raising more funds to develop a Chutes and Ladders Playground in Reservoir Park.
Daniels, I'll turn the meeting over to you as the chair now.
Thank you. Who is here from the administration to give us a summary of this bill?
Good evening, council. It's Rebecca Volmer. I'm the grant manager for the City of Harrisburg. Just a brief summary, we are looking to raise more funds for constructing the Chutes and Ladders Playground in Reservoir Park. We have a $250,000 grant from DCNR. We can use this, that grant as the match for this grant and the, that's the plan.
And what's the amount of this grant?
$250,000.
Okay, and I just dropped by the Chutes and Ladders, kind of watching the progression of how much more will we be needing?
So I believe Dave Baker is on the line as well. My understanding is that the entire area would be from $750,000 to about 1.5 million. Depending on the plans, we're waiting on some plans from the consultant, but there's a permeable parking lot to be put in place as well, which is an expense for the entire area. But if Dave's on the line, he might be able to give us some more specifics about the budget.
Yeah, I mean, that the permeable parking lot, which is also our ADA, you know, so we can have people that have handicap or disabilities and wheelchairs go directly into the playground area. That is going to be definitely a much larger expense. And as Rebecca said, we are waiting on the exact numbers still from the landscape consultant on, on how to move forward there.
Sorry, there's major construction outside of my house. So I had a tough time hearing even with my earbuds. And so what's the expectation of, of cost?
So as of now, we do not have the exact cost. Our rough budgetary numbers, we're saying it should cost a little over a million for the project to encompass everything in the project.
And, and how much, I've lost, how much have we raised so far?
Rebecca, would you like to go over the exact amounts with the different departments?
Yes, sure, sure. So to date, we have $250,000 from DCNR with a match of $250,000 from the city's allotment of CDBG funds. So that's 500. This grant would give us another $250,000. We have to lift a match 15%, but that match can come from the DCNR grant that we already have. So if we were to receive this grant, that would bring us to $750,000 total for the project so far.
So that's it for me. I am, actually, oh. Do other council members have questions? And I'll start with Councilman Allen.
I don't have a question. Just, I think it was you, Rebecca. Sum up for me the, the cost breakdown. So part of this grant, the matching we could take from the existing grant we already have, is that what you just said?
Yes, that's correct. We, we sort of can cross match these two grants together. So, and we've confirmed this with the CED. So we already have 250 from DCNR and the 15% required by DC is covered by the DCNR grant that we already have. So the city doesn't actually have to put forward any match funds for, to apply for or receive this grant at all.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, Councilwoman Bowers?
Thank you. I guess just one question regarding our timeline for this project. Do we have any reference on time? Or are we waiting until we reach the million dollar milestone?
Can, can I ask Dave to respond to that?
Yeah, so we, we are actually currently working with our landscape architect. So we're actively working on the project. We're not so much shovels in the ground construction. But that is the precursor to the shovels in the ground is, is with the landscape architect. So we are working, you know, it is a work in progress as we speak and we will continue working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman, Councilman Matson?
Yeah, just a, I guess, an economic development question. Do we know when we install playgrounds, like the impact from an economic standpoint, like the benefits? I know that Dave or Rebecca may not have the answer to that, but just kind of throwing it out there for the administration, if there is kind of any, if we invest in playgrounds, the long-term benefit, if any.
I mean, I personally do not know, like, numbers behind that. I, I could just give you, like, the layman's. I would assume we, we make the, the area a better place, you know, it's got a benefit economically, the people, at least in that surrounding area. But I, I do not know any specifics, I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, all right, well, that was just it for me. It was just kind of just general curiosity, that's all.
And I think I skipped over Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. I don't have any questions at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Majors?
Thank you. No, no, no questions at the moment.
Yeah, and President Williams?
Thank you. Rebecca, are we looking at, at other playgrounds in the City of Harrisburg to do upgrading where we would do the Chutes and Ladders?
Thank you, thanks, Sam. I, nothing that I know of at the moment. This is the only one that, that I've been focused on or that I've been aware of that we are focusing on, but there may be others sort of in the pipeline that are coming. That would, Dave, is there more that you could share with that?
My only concern, Dave, is that, you know, there's a lot of residents who do not have a mode of transportation to get to the reservoir area if they wanted to engage their children to utilize the Chutes and Ladders Playground. So I need to know where we're looking at other playgrounds in the City of Harrisburg that we would put this type of program, the Chutes and Ladders.
Absolutely understood. I am looking for Kevin on the call. I'm not sure if we lost him or not. He, he will have a master plan. What's that?
I think he's on. I see, I see him on.
Wilson Park. Wilson Park is behind the, the high school. It has a layout that could fit this profile. Wilson Park would be the next park to get renovated in the city. It fits a lot of the criteria. If not exactly the same as where the current status of the reservoir is, it would definitely fit the Chutes and Ladders model. It's, it's a hill, it's slope. It actually would probably really help at that site. That site may actually fit the model a little bit smoother. Just as well as where the way reservoir is set up because it's already set up sort of in a ravine and it goes downhill already. So that's the other one that fits this mold for Chutes and Ladders.
Okay, okay. Are you looking at any in the Alston Hill or Uptown area?
Fifth, 15th and Vernon Street, we've, we're eyeing it, we're, we're eyeing it up for some different things. Yes, there's some different issues at 15th and Vernon. We're not actually all in the park. Some of them are mobility, we have a sidewalk issue that's significant at 15th and Vernon. And maybe making the green space a little bit more interactive. Yes, so that's definitely one that, the other main one in Allisonville area for us.
And the Uptown area?
Uptown right now, we have Fourth and Dolphin, should be a shovel in August of 2020.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you, Kevin. That's all I have.
Any other questions from anyone? Any other comments from the presenters? Okay, I'd just like to recommend that we, that we ask my councils to support this bill. So if this could be placed on the agenda for the next legislative session, that'd be great.
Okay, we'll move on to Community and Economic Development Committee. Mr. Matson, Ms. Houston, would you please read Resolution 37, 2020 into record, please?
Resolution 37 of 2020 is a resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision plan to subdivide the property at 651 Elrick Street into two separate parcels to be known as 3243 Pinewood Street and 651 Elrick Street.
Mr. Matson?
Yes, is there anybody from the administration to present a summary of the resolution?
Yep, I'm here. Jeffrey Knight, planning director.
Okay, Knight?
So the application before you for the subdivision was presented, was submitted by Max Cohen with Consolidated Holdings International LLC. They are the owner of 651 Elrick Street and operator of the former Meridian Recycling that was on site at that location. So in, I believe, 2016, Mr. Cohen's company purchased 3243 Pinewood Street, 638 Elrick Street and 651 Elrick Street. And consolidated those three properties along with a small right-of-way, part of Elrick Street between adjacent to the railroad tracks there. And what this proposal right now is seeking to do is to basically reestablish the lot line between 3243 Pinewood Street, which is to the northern portion of that site and is a buddy in the city line, actually. And, and 651 Elrick Street. So in order to do this, the applicant had to file some zoning relief requests. Because in the interim between 2016 and now, they had developed some of the site for truck turnaround and truck waste station. So there was development in what would be setback areas that would be created as part of this subdivision plan. The applicant received approval of those zoning relief requests from the zoning hearing board. And so the last step in the process is to formally subdivide that consolidated property. And that is the request that is here before you now. I believe Mr. Cohen with Consolidated Holdings International may be on. And if not, oh, yes, he is on. And I also, I believe, Bill Gladstone may be here on his behalf as well. So I will let, I will let Mr. Cohen introduce himself and maybe give a little bit more background about the, the project.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Hope you're safe and sound. I think that Jeffrey pretty much described, you know, what we're trying to do. Really, all it is is just to recreate the subdivision line that was previously eliminated. You know, as part of the, the lot consolidation or land development plan that Jeffrey described. We're not, you know, proposing any type of improvements or changes at all, just, just cleaning up the property boundary, you know, information, just so that's in, you know, in accordance.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there anybody else? Okay, I did, I did review the resolution and in particular, I didn't have any questions that stand it out in my mind. So I'll defer to my colleagues to see if they have any questions. So I will open it up and I will start with Councilwoman Bowers.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Councilwoman Green?
Seems pretty straightforward, so I don't have any questions. Thank you.
President Williams?
Okay, thank you. If you do not have any proposed plans for this site, why is it necessary to separate the two lots? Because it was indicated that you could not do any new proposals and it would not allow for any new development on the properties.
I believe that we were just, we were, we would made that decision simply to be, you know, in accordance with what, you know, the, the rules required. If that answers your question.
No, not really, it doesn't.
Okay, maybe you could restate it. Jeffrey, if you have any input. I, I have to be honest, you know, Mark Karowski from K&amp;W we had worked with and we're also working with someone from McNeese. And no one was available. And so I've been, I'm, I'm being brought in, but I, hopefully I can answer any questions that you have, but I apologize for lack of specificity or.
I guess my concern that they're right presently, there's two businesses operating on that site. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, and if there would be no economic impact to you, but maybe a significant gain by separating the two, you could both now sell each of the properties separately. Is that what your plan is?
Yeah, yeah, let me help her with this. President, Bill, Bill Gladstone.
Bill, how you doing?
Fine, thank you, fine. What happened here was the lot that we're talking about on Pinewood was sold, was sold to Ideal Cars. Business that was down the street expanding, they needed more space. Once it had been sold, and we wanted to try to sell the rest of the property. We found that that line that we're talking about now had not been, the property had not been subdivided. So we have title with a cloud on it. So we talked with the ideal people, they understand the situation. The attorneys have been involved and everybody's agreed, we'd like to put the line back in place so that they actually own their property with no cloud on their title. And we can sell the rest of the property, 638 Ulrich and 651 Ulrich with no cloud on that title. That's all we're trying to do here.
So are you saying because now they're, they're combined together, you cannot sell them separately? Is that what you're saying? Because they were originally three lots. And I know what exactly, where exactly you're talking about. That's why I have a concern with that.
Right, they were originally three lots. They were combined for a master plan for Meridian. And then when Meridian decided not to follow through on the master plan, we sold off the lot on the, the lot on the, the small lot where the Ideal Cars is.
Right.
Which was the, the old Quonset Hut.
Yes.
That was sold and it wasn't done, the engineering wasn't recorded in time for the title company to pick it up. So when it got sold, it was not, it was sold and it wasn't properly subdivided. To go back to the way it was so that we can sell that lot, give them their life back. And we also have our lots, this, the Ulrich Street lots that we can sell to somebody else with no clouds on the title.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Matson?
Okay, thank you, President Williams. Councilman Allen?
I do not have any questions on this at this time. Thanks.
Okay. Councilwoman or Councilman Majors?
Thank you. So I guess, well, President Williams addressed one of my, my questions about the timing of this, but, but again, so what, what I'm confused about is how, how did they move forward with the sale on the property knowing that everything was still considered one lot?
May I answer that for you, Councilman?
Sure.
The, the sale took place because when the title work was done, the title company, they are in error here. They did not pick up the fact that it was not subdivided. The engineering work had, had been recorded in the courthouse, but they did not pick it up. And therefore, when it was sold, the, it was sold. Engineering work, yeah, had been recorded. It was not picked up and therefore, there's, they don't have clear sub, we don't have a clear subdivision reported. Oh, that was, was where title was passed because, let me just think of the timing here.
Right, because it wasn't, because, because in 2016, they, they asked to have it all merged together into one lot, which council agreed to as, as Meridian was going to move forward with the plan. Give, give me the timing on this because again, this is, you know, while I appreciate businesses wanting to do, you know, the work that they're doing. But now it's, it feels like council has to come on the back end and clean up deals for business folks that actually wanted to have all this property consolidated so they can move forward. But they decided not to go with their plan and now we're, we're on the back end trying to help clean this up.
And that's, and we appreciate that. And that's exactly what has happened, to boil it down. We were not aware of the fact that the subdivision plan had not been recorded. That's what it was, had not been recorded yet. And therefore, when it was sold, it was sold at a time where it needed to be recorded. We're just trying to clean it up. It's been sold, they have title, the title was passed, but it wasn't done properly.
Okay, so who, who did not, who, who didn't record it? That's where I'm trying to figure out where the, where the ball was dropped.
I think perhaps, and I'm not sure, but I think perhaps it was, it was all happened during COVID, I believe. And I think something got screwed up in the translation there and it was K&amp;W was doing the engineering work. And whether it was their fault or not, I can attest to that. Somehow between that company, the title company, and just a lack of, I think, a lack of good communication between the rest of us, it was not done properly.
Okay.
And, and that's our fault. And we do apologize for that.
All right, thank you. No further questions at this time.
Just to follow up on Councilman Majors' point, is there anything on the government side that we should have done to catch this error?
Um, you know, I, I don't think so, because, you know, we were, as they noted, like, the plan had been recorded and that process had all gone through smoothly in 2016. And we weren't aware of the sale of the property until I believe, maybe there was a mercantile permit filed for the business. Or I forget exactly how it came to my attention, but it was effectively, oh, we've already sold this. And we need to figure out how to, you know, legalize that sale effectively. I do know that one of the issues is that the Dauphin County Tax Parcel Map still shows them as separate parcels. And I think that's part of the issue is a lot of times when I get inquiries from the public, they'll reference things in the county's tax records. And whether it's incorrect data or, you know, still showing a lot line that should have been erased or they consolidated deeds and erased a lot line where they really shouldn't have. I think that's what is kind of the crux of some of the confusion that leads to issues like this.
Sounds like better intergovernmental communication between us and the county could prevent future mistakes like this. Sounds like better intergovernmental communication between us and the county could prevent future mistakes like this.
Yep.
So, okay, let's try to work on that as best we can on our side.
Excuse me, Mr. Madison.
Yeah.
I know Jeffrey that you said you gave an explanation, but could it be because of the fact that the application was not signed? And also there is a delay because they asked for a variance? Is that some of the reason? Or I mean, because of the COVID?
No, this was, this was actually brought to our attention before this. The zoning relief, zoning relief happened earlier in this year, like I think February, they went through the zoning relief.
February two thousand twenty.
So, yeah, so I think, you know, again, I think it's partially, you know, if somebody was looking at the county's tax parcel map, which is what a lot of people, you know, do look at when they're looking to buy property or set up a business or something. They'd see that there's a separate property. So they probably said, oh, I'm going to buy that from the owner. Not realizing that the lots were all consolidated into one. Anything else, President Williams?
No, thank you, Mr. Madison.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Does anybody else have any questions or concerns on that error topic? Okay, Councilwoman Daniels?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, let's try to work on that communication, learn from this. And yeah, I would recommend that we put the resolution up for a vote at our next legislative session.
Thank you, Mr. Madison. Thank you. Moving on to Public Works Committee, Ms. Houston, would you read Resolution forty two, two thousand twenty into record, please?
Resolution forty two of two thousand and twenty is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Harrisburg Area Transportation Study, Regional Transportation Plan Implementation Program for eight hundred and thirty, two thousand four hundred and thirty seven dollars and ninety four cents to fund lane diet landscaping and curving work on Forrester between Second and Front Streets.
Mr. Majors is the Chair of Public Works?
Yes, thank you, President Williams. I'll turn it over to the administration to provide a brief overview of the resolution.
Good evening, Chairman Majors. Just real briefly, Resolution forty two, forty three, and forty four are all priority one capital improvement projects on our five-year financial plan. So if there's any questions of where these projects are, you know, coming from, that comes from that five-year capital improvement plan. This project here, the title in the in the resolution, I think, is a bit misleading. There will be a loss of a left turn lane due to the front street two-way conversion. So there will be a lane loss which would be converted into a pedestrian refuge area. But the primary purpose of the project is to improve, well, three, three purposes. One, improve ADA. I don't know if everyone realizes this, but there's no actual ADA compliant crossing of Forrester Street at front or at second. The second point is speed, speed management. Coming off Harvey Taylor Bridge, fifty mile an hour posted speed limit, you're coming into a, you know, pedestrian conflict point with the existence of Riverfront Park there. And so the speeds, you know, should be dropping to about twenty five miles an hour, you know, so that's a twenty five mile an hour drop towards the end of that bridge. So speed control is the other focus of the project. This project, actually, the grant is a new, a new grant. We have not applied for it yet, just just came into existence. It's federal transportation funds. So there's only, you know, certain roadways in the city that are eligible for these funds. This is a project that already ranks high regionally. It's been listed as a high regional priority in the RTP, the Regional Transportation Plan. So we feel pretty comfortable about, you know, how this would score as opposed, you know, compared to other applications. The funding opportunity is one million dollar per year per county. So that's Cumberland, Dolphin, and Perry County. So our ask is almost the entire tulfin, you know, amount allocated to Dolphin County. But like I said, it's a high, it's a high priority project. I think it will score well. It's been mentioned in about six different hats, safety studies that were done, safety studies, transportation studies. And those are referenced in the attachment to the resolution, which is basically the pre-application meeting slide deck. We did have a pre-application meeting on, was it Friday? I think it was last week, I think it was last week, not not last Friday, last week. You know, prior to submitting our application. So we need a resolution supporting the application along with the application which is being worked on and the due date is July thirty first, I believe.
All right, thank you. And then, so just walk me through the the process a little bit. So after it goes to, so we move forward and it goes to the federal level. Are we looking at this, is it a regional and then it has to go to USDOT for approval or and scoring? Or where, where, where does that, how does that process work?
Okay, so good question. Try to answer. Gets a little confusing and even I get confused sometimes on the process. But we have an RTP and then we come up with a tip, Transportation Improvement Plan. This is at the regional level, Tri-County Harrisburg Area Transportation Study. So the city has membership into that or two appointees. Each of the counties, Dolphin, Perry, Cumberland, Cat has appointee, Penda has appointee. When this three million dollar per year spend, which is part of this program, once that's approved, it goes to the STP, which is the State Transportation Plan. That's what gets submitted to the federal government. So once that's approved, the money is available in October. It'll be available this October federal, you know, federal fiscal year. But the applications itself won't go to the federal government. Once that's approved, the applications themselves will go to the working selection committees, mostly hats staff, but there are some appointees from the counties. And then it will go to the coordinating committee of hats for, well, the tech committee and then and then the coordinating committee for approval. Once that's approved, it gets programmed into Pendot's project delivery with a local sponsor of, you know, the city Harrisburg would be the local sponsor. So it would be delivered in the same manner as like the Riverwalk and Hur Street projects where, you know, Pendot would do the bidding for it, that kind of thing. So we would handle the design, that that's sort of our proposal in the grant, is the city would handle the design and the construction inspection as our match, you know, those two. We do have a design proposal from the team with Wallace Montgomery who already completed the traffic study for this as part of the Second Street Two Way. And the construction inspection services would be done by one of the two teams that have bid, you know, been selected to handle this construction inspection services for the city, the open end contracts.
Okay, and do we have any regional support outside of, do we have any regional support for for this project that's going to be submitted? Because, I mean, with us taking pretty much all of the money that would be allotted to the county in order for us to have a, a good sense of if we're gonna even, you know, be eligible. Does, how does the the county and then our other folks in the tri-county region feel about the project?
So I have not talked to any of the county commissioners about the project. It did, like I said, it is, it actually, truth be told, it surprised me that the project was not placed on the Transportation Improvement Plan twenty twenty one, twenty twenty four. And if you're, you know, sitting at home or council members, if you feel it should be added, you know, those public comments on that Transportation Improvement Plan are open until the, you know, until Friday. There was a lot of projects selected, you know, in Dolphin County. You know, in particular in Dairy Township, a lot, a lot of quality life projects were selected over this one. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure why it wasn't selected. Like I said, it is a high priority project. It was not, it was one of the only high priority projects not selected. So it does score very well in the regional transportation planning. Like I said, it's almost every study of this area, which there's been a lot, right? You have your Cross Rivers Connection Study, your Camp Hill Capital Study, your Harrisburg Safety Studies, they've all referenced this. And these are studies not done by the city. These are studies actually done by by Harrisburg Area Transportation. So, you know, I think it will, it will score very well. And, you know, it's eaten up a lot of the a lot of the budget, but that's a one, that's one million per year, right? So this is a four-year plan. So there'd be, there are monies available for other projects. And and also eligible for those would be actual studies. So, you know, a municipality or what have you in Dolphin County that would want to study a project, you know, could could apply and take, you know, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand dollars, whatever that study costs and do studies or do design fees or something like that. But this project has already been studied. We're, you know, we're already through all the transportation, traffic analysis, everything else. So we, you know, it wouldn't do us any good to study it again. But I, but, you know, having said all that, I think the Camp Hill Capital Project is supported very strongly by county commissioners, both Harrisburg and and in Camp Hill, actually, residents. Because that corridor i- is a high, high-speed corridor, high, high, you know, conflict corridor. That intersection of Front Forrester is the most crash-prone intersection in the entire city. Forty-seven crashes within two hundred feet of that intersection in the past four years. That's almost once a month, one a month.
Right. No, and I don't think we're getting any disagreement here on that. It's for me, it's ensuring that we get buy-in from from the region because we do want to see improvements to this intersection. Not only just for the city or the city residents, but for folks that commute into the city. So I do have other questions, but I'll defer to my colleagues for now. I will turn it over. I guess I'll just go in alphabetical order. So I'll start with Councilman Allen. Do you have any questions?
Wayne, I know you were mentioning about the, or I think Wes mentioned it, and then we had a conversation about the regional support for it. Do you think that'll be problematic if there's not the regional support for us actually to get this grant?
You know, this is a good project, and I think no one's going to deny that, you know. I think it's possible that they come back to the city and ask us to either phase portions of the, it's, it's an expensive project, right? It's about a million dollars for, basically amounts to one city block. You know, they maybe ask us to phase it, which we could, you know, we could certainly look at that. We can use paint instead of curb or something like that. Try, you know, try to phase it in and maybe Pendot could do it in the next, you know, in the next resurfacing of Forrester or something like that. Or, you know, somewhere down the line. But, you know, I think Pendot's going to support it because when they paved front street, when they paved Forrester Street back in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen timeframe, they were supposed to put in ADA compliant ramps at those intersections, you know, they didn't do that. Now, you're okay if it's part of your transition plan and you have a plan to do it. So, you know, you know, Pendot officials have said, yeah, you know, as long as we're planning on doing it. So, so, you know, this is planned on being done. It's just a matter of when, you know, we'd like to see it done. You know, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two timeframe. You know, maybe, maybe some of the Pendot officials, maybe some of the county officials would rather see it programmed in like a twenty twenty five year. But, you know, that's a long time to wait to be able to cross the street, you know, so we'd like to accelerate it.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's, you're not getting any disagreement from me about the merits of the project itself. I just know that it's not just up to our will, right, to make it happen.
Right, right.
Those are all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Councilwoman Bowers, excuse me.
Yeah, I do have two questions. You mentioned the studies that were, I guess, reflective of this area. And I was curious to know, one, if they were timely? And two, were any recommendations made that specifically outlined this intersection or this area for specified changes?
Yeah, great question. So in the actual PowerPoint slide, we actually, you know, put red arrows on all the different references in the study. The most recent study that was done would be the Camp Hill to Capital Safety Study completed in two thousand nineteen. In that study, it does recommend removing that slip lane from Forrester to Front Street. And the reason it's recommended removing that slip lane is you have, if you have one car stacking that right through right lane, you can't use the slip lane. So what it does, it just creates an additional pedestrian cross with, you know, basically no, no benefit to motorists. So that was referenced in there and they are also shown in that study, some concepts showing some pedestrian refuge areas. The Cross River Connection Study, actually, when I was doing the grant right up and preparing for the pre-application meeting, I actually, you know, dug up that document, which I'm thinking that was done in about two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. And they actually are showing a bump out, which we've incorporated in into this concept plans for this project on, on the, would be the north, excuse me, northeast quadrant of Front Forrester. So, yeah, there are pieces from all the studies, you know, when you do a study, you're sort of just making recommendations. You're not doing conceptual design. You're not looking at utility conflicts. You're not looking at, you know, those types of things, which we, which we have done through the, through the concept. We looked at traffic analysis. We looked at those types of things. Truth be told, it's, it's gonna, what I'm about to say is probably not going to make much sense to some people. And I had, I had a look twice at the numbers. But when Second Street goes two-way, the traffic on Forrester Street redistributes, that we know. And so actually, Forrester Street actually improves the traffic flows on Forrester. The one point that is always an issue is the intersection of Front and Forrester. You do get stacking on Forrester Street Bridge in the AM because Front Street actually with their three lanes gets more of the, more of the calls. And some of that calls is actually related to the pedestrian time, how long it takes a pedestrian to cross, you know, basically four separate roadways, right? Slip lane, eastbound, westbound, slip lane. So when you, when you shorten that crosswalk distance, you actually can give less time to pedestrians and sort of balance out the traffic flow. So this is a pedestrian safety improvement project. It is a traffic calming project. But I don't think it's going to have, I think it's actually going to benefit traffic flows as well. Slow and steady is what we like to see with, you know, vehicular traffic. And I think, I think this project helps gets us there.
Okay, thank you. My other question was, you mentioned that there are other areas that may be eligible for funding, I guess, in the future? Or I was just curious, what are those areas and what is their level of priority?
So, you know, we're following the priority one capital projects from the, you know, from the five-year ICA agreement. The other projects that rank high priority and probably, well, not probably, definitely the most high priority project in a city would be the State Street Rapid Response Project, right? That's number one. Now, we're, you know, it was, I wanted to apply for that one for this because I thought that this project in particular would already be funded on the tip. We've met with Pendot recently and we feel that, you know, well, they didn't give us a number, but they're definitely committed to assisting with that project. There's a few of the details that we're trying to work out and we do intend to have a public engagement to make sure that the public and the residents and all the people that we worked with to, you know, help with that project are on, you know, agreement with the solutions that we've, you know, are trying to work with Pendot on. But, but so that, that project is number one, Seventeenth Street Complete Streets between Dairy and Front. But is a high priority project on our capital improvement plan. You have the Boyd Street. Or I guess the Urban Meadow, which we'll talk about later today, is one of the high priority projects, the East West Connection Project, which is, you know, portions of, well, that just like basically one block of Chestnut and Walnut Street downtown.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move on to Councilwoman Daniels, if you're still with us.
I am, I am. I don't have any questions.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Green?
I don't have many questions, but if you could just explain a little further how this fits into the Vision Zero project?
Right, so, so, you know, Vision Zero, obviously, you're, you're, you're on the committee, right? So you, you understand our mission. This is the number one crash-prone intersection in the city. It's not as, you know, knock- It's not as uh, you know, knock on wood, but we haven't not had the issues with the ped- pedestrian conflicts and fatalities that we did on State Street. When you have almost, you know, one, one major reportable collision, crash uh every month, there's been a lot of property damage at this intersection. Traffic signal equipment had, since I've been here, has been knocked out three times. Complete, you know, knockouts. That, you know, that doesn't go into safety, but o- obviously that, that can uh, th- that can lead to issues. You know, so it, this was a, an area that, a focus of ours. It's on our heat map, on our Vision Zero heat map. It's our high injury network. You know, if you just, you do your heat maps and you're showing your, your crash uh collision clusters, crash clusters, um, this is, you know, this stands out like a, you know, bright beacon.
All right, thanks, Wayne. Um, just kind of more of a comment at this point. I just wanna make sure that we're investing equally in all parts of our city. Um, you know, with Vision Zero, I know one of the biggest focuses was State Street. Uh, so to me, I would have rather seen that be a focal point of a, a major grant like this than something downtown. Just because it seems like, uh, you know, all we hear is, you know, projects downtown, midtown. We wanna make sure that all throughout all of our city, wanted to opportunity available. We make sure we uh hit residential areas as well, so.
Yeah, a- a- and if I could, I mean, I, I, I'm not gonna speak for the administration completely, but I believe the intent is fund State Street no matter what it takes. And if that, if that means declining a grant like this or trying to, you know, repurpose it, then, then that's, then that's what's gonna happen. State Street is, is has always, you know, has been the priority since Division Zero was enacted. I- it, it would be uh unfair and, and, and just insane to pick a, a project over, over, over State Street. This, the only reason we selected this one is because of its current ranking on the, on the um, on the RTP, the Regional Transportation Plan, because it has that regional transportation importance. It hits all the um requirements. It, it'd almost be hard not to, not to fund, and then that would give us an opportunity to you know, look, look for other sources for State Street.
All right, thanks, Wayne. That's all.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Madsen.
Uh, yeah, a quick question in terms of budgeting. Um, do you foresee any problems uh with the project that could uh cause us to over-budget or exceed the grant dollars?
So, you know, I think um, I think, well, I don't think. I know, they had us put like really high contingencies in this project. Twenty-five percent contingency on construction. It was fifteen percent for grant, I mean, for uh construction management, and then uh a- another high contingency. I'm trying to think, oh, I mean, fifteen percent, I think, for maintenance protection traffic. So tho- there, there was by design in this uh high contingencies. Um, not really sure what the grant agreement would look like with PennDOT, but it would be our project um to lead. And so, you know, like if the, if the bids came in high, for example, you know, w- we would have to meet with PennDOT and decide whether, you know, whether they would um approve the over uh, over overrun there, or if um, you know, if they would, it would come back to the city. And at that point, we may have to, you know, scale, scale back the project. But because of all the, you know, PennDOT's involvement, they're pretty good at um, you know, pretty good at delivering transportation projects, at least in the bidding and the contracting phase. It make it very difficult for contractors to, you know, pull one over on unforeseen condition type thing. I think probably our biggest challenge would be in the design. Fortunately, the consultant that we um are recommending for this project that had provided the um the, 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 the proposal, um, you know, if the city, or I'm sorry, yeah, if the city does move forward with the project, then that consultant, we've worked with them on the other, on, you know, the Second Street um project, that, that design team, and we're familiar with them and, and uh, you know, I, I feel like their uh number is, is a good, fair number. It's not um, it's not one where they're just uh trying to get their foot in the door, and then they're gonna start, you know, submitting change requests.
And I guess, say, we were to exceed the grant dollars, but then council will have to allocate or reallocate dollars, and then they have to go through council for approval?
S- so, yeah, I mean, if it's not in our budget, we, we definitely would. I mean, our capital, so our capital project budget, you know, some of our projects go over, some, some go under. It's, you know, I'm talking less than ten percent uh over-under budget, and we usually just do a um, you know, purchase order, uh, uh, what we call a reconciliation change order, and, and we've been able to keep the actual capital project budget, you know, under, under the budgeted amount. So if you have three projects worth two hundred thousand and one, and one came in at a hundred and fifty, and one came in at, you know, two-ten or something like that, you probably wouldn't see that. But anything significant enough uh that would, you know, sort of blow the budget, y- you would hear about. The other thing I should probably mention is this project, the way it's laid out is that we're reducing the impervious surface by a third of an acre. No, ha- half an acre. Um, so I've, I've reached out to Capital Region Water, and we do have a meeting set up to determine whether or not they would be interested in um partner in participating in this project, you know, because it is consistent with their um, you know, their goals as well.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, President Williams.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Majors. Wayne, I, I'm in agreement with um Ms. Green where, and also Ms. Bowers, where there's other roadways that, that should be eligible for uh this type of a project. And uh with Ms. Green, where in the city of Harrisburg, there's curbing that needs to be replaced and, and, and need to be looked at. I, I guess I concur with her as well. We're doing all the work downtown here in the Second Street Corridor, uh Front Street Corridor, then we talked about the Third Street Corridor, um, making emphasis on Chestnut Street. There is so many streets in the city of Harrisburg that could utilize that the services are being improved and expanding, yet we're not concentrating. And when are we going to look at those areas?
Well, I, you know, I, I mean, I, I don't know that that's fair. I mean, State Street is the number one priority. Um, we've paved, you know, this pa- our paving projects last year were um Third Street, Brookwood, Berry Hill, Thirteenth, Sycamore. You know, so tho- those are none of the, well, except for the portion of Third Street, you know, but Third Street was downtown, midtown, and uptown. Uh, the year prior to that was Industrial Road. Uh, the year prior to that was Seventeenth, Fifteenth, and uh, was that the, the one alley there in midtown? But um, so I, I don't know that that's fair. I mean, uh Seventeenth Street is, is definitely on our uh five uh Priority One project. Sixth Street Corridor is on there. Problem with the Sixth Street Corridor is um, there's so many like planned developments that we're trying to work through and all the utility uh, you know, work that's happening. We don't wanna do any sort of resurfacing um, you know, until, until some of those utility connections are done for the developments. But we do have a project we're working with um, with uh Mr. Woolley and uh Lily on the CDBG um funding opportunities for the Sixth Street Corridor. Um, so I, you know, I, I don't know that that's fair. I, I think the projects, if you look at a map, have been pretty, pretty spread out across the city, if, if not concentrated. Al- also, we have the Dairy Street. You know, we did quarter of a million dollars in curbing and sidewalk and ramps in, on Dairy Street this year, and there's another hundred and fifty thousand dollar um proposed between uh Thirteenth and Fifteenth that we're teaming with Capital Region Water. So they have another, I wanna say half million dollars invested in, in just that, just that section. And then, and you, and then you have the I eighty-three project, which you know, we're, we're not a huge fan of the scope of the project, but it does, it does hit Nineteenth Street, Seventeenth Street, Paxton Street, Thirteenth Street, you know, tho- those, those streets as well. And that'd be federal funding.
Okay. Wayne, um, whether you like it or not, whether I uh talk about the improvements in other areas of the city, I don't care. Because you talked about not being fair. We pushed you uh in this, not this administration, but other administrations, and now this administration to do certain things, and that's why it's being done. So when I asked about other improvements in the city, uh, I've been on you for the last three years about the Sixth Street Corridor where uh we have the railroad, the old railroad uh tracks on the curbing. It's cutting into people's tires, and they're consistently buying and replacing their tires. That, to me, is uh a safety hazard because the children walk from Sixth and McClay Street to Sixth and Division Street, and they cross at those particular sections. And from that area alone, the curbing is out, and I've shown you that. So if you're talking about fair, why don't we, we talk about how fair is not, that Sixth Street has not, the work has not been done there?
Well, I mean, last year, the city, we did put some ADA ramps in along Sixth Street uh Corridor. We are working on a Sixth Street Corridor, um, you know, wi- with uh potential for utilizing CDBG funds. The federal courthouse will be putting in new curbing. State Archives will be putting in new curbing along Sixth Street. There's the Harrisburg Housing Authority will be putting uh in developments along the Sixth Street Corridor. You know, I, I, I've, I actually tried to get the state to pay for the uh uh curbing on the farce, on the uh west side. A- a- and I, and I, you know, had sort of a gentleman's agreement with some folks with DGS and uh, a- a- and also Mr. uh Barton um to improve, because it, you know, it is a property whose responsibility maintains streets and uh curbs and sidewalks. It's not the city, that's city ordinance. You know, but if there's monies that can be used for those purposes, like CDBG funds, you know, I'm definitely try- trying to get all the improvements we can. I mean, I, I can go out and cite every single property going along Sixth Street. I don't think that's gonna do us any good. You know, I think we work together on, on, on finding funding opportunities. This, this grant app, this grant right here would not be I, I don't think the Sixth Street Corridor would, would rank very well. It is a federally eligible road, though, so it, it will, it meets the minimum threshold as being an eligible project.
Did you cite anybody on Third Street as the residents when you put in the curbing from uh the whole way up Third Street? Now, when you talk, wait a minute, Wayne.
Yes, I did.
When you talk about the curbing, you know that that curbing was done thirty, forty, fifty years ago when they had their old tracks in the uh city of Harrisburg. So we've been talking about that for more than three or four years. So now you're telling me, well, did I, did I cite the residents on Third Street? Well, of course not. Of course not, but that's a safety hazard. When you're talking about the federal courts, of course, they're doing a new project. They're gonna put new curbing there to make the project look good. Of course, the general services is gonna put new curbing to make the project look good, and for them to be able to have deliveries come in and out of that area. But I'm telling you about the, the project where I've asked you repeatedly, the train tracks are jumping out in the street. Every section, Wayne. Now, that was my only concern. What are you gonna do to Sixth Street Project?
Yeah, so I don't know that they're um, that you, you're talking about the cur- the re- the curbing armor on, not, not the, they're not railroad tracks, right? That's curbing armor.
No, that was the armored, that's the, you weren't, you were not here in the thirties and forties when, when we had the, the cable cars going up and down Sixth Street Corridor. And so that has been a project of the city of Harrisburg. They put that particular curbing in at that time. So now I'm at, you're saying to me that, you know, you did not ask the residents on Third Street, or you did not cite the residents, I'm sorry, on Third Street. So why would you cite the residents on Sixth Street when they had nothing to do with that, what was put in place?
I wasn't saying I, I was intending to cite the residents. I said that, that's not gonna get us anywhere. That, 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 that is an option. I did cite residents on Third Street. I said, uh, CVS at McClay in particular, whose uh sidewalk is shoved up. You know, that one comes to mind also. The property at uh, at Third and uh Locust Street um had, had issues and, and received a, a letter, and, and then they worked together to restore, you know, their sidewalk as well. Sixth Street, the other problem with Sixth Street, it was resurfaced during the, the Thompson administration. So, you know.
Sixth Street.
Parts, parts of it was. Yep. So, you know, we, we are, we do have a project, and I'll share, I'll share with you. I can email you uh sort of a scope. It's, it's, it's pretty modest in size, but that's the CDBG funding that's available. That we, we can go out and, and, and scope other, other sections and try to find available funds, but, you know, not every um, I can't just prioritize needs based on a- and line it up. I have to line it up with funding opportunities, uh, you, you know what I, you know what I mean?
I understand that, Wayne, but I, I've been here almost sixteen years, and I've been asking, you know, where the funding is for certain areas in the city of Harrisburg, and not just on the North Sixth Street Corridor. So when I ask, when you're doing uh projects for improvement or upgrading curbing, or if you're upgrading landscaping in the city of Harrisburg, of course, I'm gonna question you, because I don't see it where the areas that needs it the most, where you didn't prioritize. And, and I'm saying this to you as other residents have questioned me. You're doing a lot of work in the Third Street Corridor downtown area, and they're concerned. They've been living here for thirty-four years. They see no improvement, no upgrades in their area. Of course, you're gonna do the, the street paving because it's been needed. Hasn't been done in the last fifteen years. Of course, we understand that. That's all I have, uh, Mr. Majors.
Thank you. Uh, and I think uh, you know, I think President Williams is expressing a lot of the, President Williams and, and uh, because Councilwoman Green, Councilwoman Bowers are expressing a lot of the uh concern and uh frustration that we feel um from our residents, uh especially regarding um, yeah, trying to align the funding that's available with projects, uh particularly um on the State Street project. So again, um, I just, I know uh it was asked previously, but can you explain to me why this wasn't necessarily th- this uh transportation study regional plan, this program wasn't necessarily the best fit for applying for it to help State Street, which are, um, e- even by, you know, I think all of our estimates is the number one priority in trying to make improvements too for uh residential safety.
Right, so uh State Street is by far and away the um most important safety project. Unfortunately, the State Street project is not ranked on the Regional Transportation Plan, whereas Forester Street is, is ranked on, on the Regional Transportation Plan. You know, that, that goes into how, how they look at projects. They, they don't only, only look at safety. They, they look at, you know, vehicle miles traveled, lane miles traveled, and, and you do have a, you know, sort of a concentration of two major corridors there, Front, Front and Forester. Um, and also Second, too, right? So um, you know, it, it's not, I, I didn't mean to belittle State Street. I still actually, you know, we met, administration met, and I still wanted to um, you know, put, put State Street on as an applic- you know, put it, put forward a State Street application instead of Forester. Because I thought Forester would be, I thought it would receive funding through the Harrisburg Air Transportation Study uh twenty-one, twenty, twenty-four tip because it's ranked so, so high in the region. Unfortunately, it didn't, and we, and we had to make a decision. So we presented the project that they couldn't deny funding for. Uh, a- and, and in the, and in the interim, we've been working with PennDOT, you know, that's federal funds, right? PennDOT has state funds. Uh, that, that's, that's separate, obviously. And so we've been working with them, and this is State Street. We've convinced PennDOT that it is a high priority. We met with the secretary. I think we covered those meetings. And we met with, uh, more recently with the uh District Executive, uh Mr. Kaiser. And uh, you know, he, he said he's, they're gonna do everything they can to, to uh, you know, assist with funding. A- a- and, and help us deliver that project. There's a few details that have to be worked out, and obviously there's some parking implications that I have to get with the residents, but we've also made improvements to State Street. I mean, we have a project right now, a hundred thousand dollars. That was a, we were able to reallocate from the LED street light loan to replace all the lights uh on State Street. That's under contract with uh, you know, a company that, that'll be done this summer. We made some traffic signal safety improvements, uh, new crosswalks, uh, things like that, and, and, you know, so, so State Street's a priority, and we're working on State Street. But I, I, you know, I hope I answered your question of why, why we selected funding for this one over State Street.
Okay, um.
Mr. Majors, I have another question, please.
President.
Have you looked at McClay Street and the high traffic that's uh from the bypass to the McClay Street Corridor that intersects with Cameron Street? Uh, the high speed that uh the cars are traveling at? Have they looked at that as well?
So uh, you're talking about the intersection of uh
Cameron and McClay.
Cameron and McClay. So interestingly enough, you're talking about the second most cr- crash-prone intersection in the city. So there's a couple of projects in that vicinity. So Fourth and McClay, we re- we just redid the ramps this, this summer, uh just in the past about few weeks, and then that'll be resurfaced from Third to Fourth, and then Fourth down to the next block. Uh, you know, small repaving there. But going across the, and then you have like the Autozone and some, so there'll be some sidewalk improvements in there. The McClay Street Bridge is actually scheduled to be replaced. The actual intersection, I have concept drawings that we presented uh to HATS to get funding for um Cameron and McClay, and it actually was selected uh for funding uh with design to start in twenty twenty-four. Now, you know, that, that, they picked that over, over Forester. Um, you know, so we, we, we wanted to discuss that. Um, you know, so we, we, we wanted to discuss that with them. The entire McCl, um, sorry, the entire Cameron Street corridor is going to be resurfaced at some point in time, probably in the next five years. I know it's a concrete road, but, so I don't know if they plan on just, you know, coating it with asphalt or or actually doing a complete, you know, reinforced concrete pavement design. Um, I'm anxious to see, it's, I didn't see it on this uh, this tip, this uh twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four. So I assume it's gonna be on, on the next one. But, yeah, we, we uh, we actually have proposals to uh improve that, which actually is funded. Um, so I could share, I could share you with you those concepts that were presented.
Okay, that'd be fine, but has a study been done to uh deter the um end of the motorist from traveling at a rate of speed of forty to fifty miles an hour going over that bridge and down from down through the bypass, I mean, up over the bypass?
So there was a Cameron Street Safety Study done probably two thousand fourteen. Uh, it was a low-cost safety study, so the improvements were not much and you probably wouldn't even notice them. But some of them were like, they painted like an edge line. Um, re, redid some of the signals to like eight-inch head to twelve-inch head, you know, back plates and things like that. There's also a development that's coming in between Elmerton, it's actually in Susquehanna Township right there between, I guess it's Elmerton and Ag that uh PennDOT's looking at, um, you know, so additional, additional traffic. So there will be a study done, you know, for that development. We're involved, obviously, because the roadway's in the city. Um, so, you know, it's being um submitted to PennDOT as part of the um uh highway occupancy permitting process. But, but no, I uh, I'm not aware, other than the two thousand fourteen Cameron Street Safety Study, I'm not, I'm not aware of any other recent studies of the corridor now, the McClay Street Bridge. Um, you know, that's a complete rebuild, so that'll be, that'll be widened, you know, for stage construction. We can take a look at those plans when they're submitted, we can look at them together if you like, and try to see if there's modifications that would, you know, help with traffic calming and, and things like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any additional questions or comments from any of my fellow uh council members? All right, uh, seeing none, uh, I think we will recommend uh, I, I ask that we recommend uh having Resolution forty-two placed on the calendar uh for a vote, you know, recognizing that it is just the application. So we'll just have to see where, uh, what happens on the funding piece um from uh federal government. Uh, moving on, uh, Resolution forty-three of twenty twenty. I guess uh I can read it in uh Chardan, it's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates for the purpose of providing east-west multimodal connection phase one engineering services. And I'll be turning it back over, uh, I guess to Wayne for another uh introduction.
Uh, great, thank, thank you again, um, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so Resolution forty-three, uh, this is the east-west connection. This is partially funded by um the Commonwealth Financing Authority, um, uh, multimodal grant. So the majority of the project is uh Second and Walnut, and then Walnut going up uh up to, you know, Fourth Street there in front of Strawberry Square. Uh, obviously, the condition of the road um requires resurfacing. Uh, there's a number of sidewalks, I'm sorry, it actually goes all the way to Front Street. I apologize, it goes through the intersection of Second uh, uh, to Front Street. Uh, the pavement condition is really bad shape, there's a lot of utilities in the area. Uh, the sidewalk is actually in front of our public safety building. And so um, talking about sidewalk and curb earlier, you know, the city's own sidewalk and curb. Um, you know, we should probably cite ourselves in some, some situations here. But uh, we're gonna, we're gonna have to improve, um, you know, sidewalk and curb along the city's uh front um as part of that project. Um, we put out an R F P, fourteen responses of all very qualified firms. There was a three-person selection committee selected by uh, by the mayor, Nona Watson. Our Director of Community Economic Development was selected because of her perspective. You know, this is a C D, a C D B G, I'm sorry, a D C E D grant. Uh, so there is a community economic development, an economic development piece to it. And then Todd Vanderwoody with the Downtown Improvement District, um, you know, because they, they uh obviously have contacts with the uh businesses along, along the corridor. Uh, I forgot to mention Chestnut Street, there's a section of Chestnut Street where we have some major rutting and stuff from the uh transit use, uh, that's also part of the project. So the R F P went out and fourteen responses, the selection committee actually recommended uh, the firm, the team, uh, Kim Lee Horn, uh, which is joined with uh Dollwood as a D B E sub. So um, they are actually on this call, Mr. Uh Matt Shitten, and he can uh introduce himself and, and, and the firm. We have not worked with the firm, done a lot of work down in Philadelphia, and we're excited uh to have them on, on board.
Hi, everyone, good evening, it's, it's Matt from Kim Lee Horn. Um, just wanna say thank you uh for your time tonight. Uh, just a little brief background on Kim Lee Horn, uh, we're a full-service engineering firm um with national offices, but I'm sort of out of the Philadelphia office and have done some work uh throughout Pennsylvania doing similar projects like this on multimodal transportation funds, green light go, Arlie-funded projects, the red light enforcement um and pedestrian safety improvements. We've teamed up with Dollwood, which we work with in the Philadelphia area, and Brandon Peterson from Dollwood is, is on the line as well. So that's sort of the Kim Lee Horn intro.
Thanks, Matt, this is Brandon Peterson with Dollwood Engineering. Uh, we're excited to work with uh, with Wayne and, and his team on another infrastructure project here in Harrisburg. Uh, look forward to working with Matt and his team also. So I just wanna say uh thanks for your time and uh appreciate it, thank you.
All right, uh, thank you, um, I will uh, I guess go in uh reverse order on this. I'll start with uh President Williams, you have any questions on Resolution uh forty-three?
No, I don't at this time, thank you.
Okay, uh, let's go to uh Councilman Mattson, any questions on Resolution forty-three?
Uh, none for me, thanks.
All right, uh, let's go, Councilwoman Green, any questions on Resolution forty-three?
No, I don't have any questions, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
No questions.
All right, uh, Councilwoman Bowers, any questions?
Thank you, um, ju, so just curious, out of the fourteen responses that you received, um, how many were local?
Trying to think, I mean, most of the local firms, since we're the capital, uh, you know, are, are bigger regional firms. Um, I, I would say at least half were probably, you know, in Cumberland, York, Dolphin Counties. Um, there was one Harrisburg firm, uh, uh, well, I shouldn't say Harris. There's one firm with a Harrisburg office, I think, that um, that, that, that put a proposal in, and they, they actually scored pretty well. Um, but uh, Kim Lee Horn was, was the highest-ranked firm. Now Dollwood is, is, you know, local.
Okay, I was just curious, thank you.
Okay, and uh, Councilman Allen, any questions?
I don't, uh, not at this time, but thank you.
All right, um, so again, I guess with this being all the engineering services, uh, do you have, I know you're working with uh Dollwood and there, is there any other plan to work with any additional uh local uh businesses uh in the Harrisburg area on this project?
Uh, in terms of engineering services, Dollwood is the only one, um, they're actually gonna provide about forty-five percent of the services under this contract.
Okay, um, all right, well, you know, we know that we have tons of projects and tons of work to get done in the city. So um, we appreciate, you know, your willingness to work with them. And then, like I said, having that component of uh, the, I guess the D B is, is also very important. And uh, you said forty-four percent of the overall project?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you, uh, are there any additional questions or comments on Resolution forty-three? All right, uh, seeing none, I will ask that Resolution forty-three be placed on uh the next city council legislative agenda. Uh, moving on, we will move on to Resolution uh forty-four. Uh, and Chardan, if you're with us, could you mind reading that into the record?
Resolution forty-four of two thousand and twenty is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and per, and enter into professional service agreement with Wilson Consulting Group, P C, for the purpose of providing engineering services, including conceptual design, final design, and bidding construction services for the Boyd Street Urban Meadow Expansion.
All right, thank you, Chardan, and I'll turn it back over to Wayne for a brief uh introduction or brief uh review of this resolution.
Um, great, tha, thank you. So uh, this was a gaming grant uh, uh funded uh design services. Um, when the city decided it wanted to uh pursue design services, met with uh two, two local design firms uh that have recently delivered projects in the city. Uh, the one here uh that was um, you know, whose proposal was put forward to the uh gaming grant uh grant selection committee for consideration is Wilson Consulting. Uh, Wilson has a lot of experience. They've, they've delivered the Riverwalk project for the city, the Hurst Street Accessible Route project. They've also done work for the Green Belt, uh, the, the crossings, the Green Belt crossings on, on Cameron and, and Front Street as long, as well as other areas in the neighboring municipalities um on behalf of Dolphin County. Um, so we're comfortable with uh their proposal. Uh, the way, the, the way this would work is the city would actually uh engage them, uh, approve their invoices, and then the county uh would, would pay them directly. But with me today is uh Mr. Nate McCullough, Project Manager for Wilson, um, that can, you know, uh, introduce Wilson and, and help answer any questions you might have.
Uh, hopefully everybody can hear me, uh, good evening, Nate McCullough, Wilson Consulting Group. Uh, thank you for your consideration tonight on this matter. Uh, as Wayne mentioned, uh, we've been working in the city for quite a few years now, all the way back to Paul Francis's time as city engineer. Uh, safe walks to schools around the city school, um, the Riverwalk, McClay Street, Hurst Street. Um, currently doing the Fort Hunter Connector um up at the north end of the city. Uh, and where we are, a small business located in Mechanicsburg, Pennsylvania. Fifteen employees, uh, we do intend on this project to have a D B E out of Steelton H B Engineering uh for approximately fifteen to sixteen percent of the contract value. Uh, and we just look forward to doing another great project for the city to uh improve everybody's wellness. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, and I guess, and on this one, the, the project amount, Wayne, uh, I guess we're at seventy-five thousand, is that correct?
So that's just the design fees, this project is not currently funded for construction. Uh, there is a opportunity perhaps uh with working with uh G S A, um, but it sounds like they're over budget on their entire project. But they're supposed to fund some of the uh bus stops on Sixth near, uh, near the federal courthouse. I, I can't imagine they're gonna try to get out of that. But that, that, this design includes the design of those bus stops so that they're, you know, uh, and then the rest of the project is the pedestrian, is a pedestrian, um, you know, actually continuing the pedestrian uh alley uh, which currently goes um uh, Third to
Fifth.
Fifth, yeah.
Fifth, yeah.
Fifth or sixth, I thought, I thought you said from Third to Sixth.
What, well, it would
Right.
Right, continue the improvements that go from uh, you know, Third to Fourth and, and
And two.
Continue those up to Sixth Street, yeah.
Right, right, that's what I'm reading.
Yeah, okay, um, all right, uh, and so we don't have a plan as of right now to, for the funding on that last piece, right?
No, this is just so uh, uh, Dolph, you know, Dolphin County granted the project uh uh, for design fees. Um, once you have a shovel-ready project, some of the grant opportunities might become available. We're looking, we'll be looking at um D C N R grants, D C D, we'll look to G S A as part of the federal courthouse project, although I think their um contribution will be limited to bus stops up there, you know, near Harris Street. Um, private, private developments, I think um there's some R cap so awarded in, in the project vicinity. Uh, the developer, potential private developer with um, you know, I guess the relocation or the uh Hack Midtown is moving out, you know, maybe uh a private development. So we have not identified construction funding at this time, but we, we're, have full funds for the uh design. So our plan is to get a shovel-ready project and, and, and look forward to uh seeking funds to transportation alternative uh, funding too, that's what uh funded the Riverwalk. So we, we keep an eye out for funding opportunities for this project.
Okay, all right, uh, I'll start with uh, cause I'll start with uh Vice President Allen, Councilman Allen, have any questions on this project?
I don't right now, I was just uh, uh, reading through it, um, so I don't.
Okay, all right, no problem, uh, go to uh Councilwoman Bowers, any questions?
No, thank you.
All right, uh, Councilwoman Daniels?
I have a moment.
Right, Councilwoman Green?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, uh, also, uh, Councilman Mattson, any questions?
No questions for me, thank you.
All right, thank you, uh, and uh President Williams, any questions?
This one, Wayne, are, all the people that we are engaging services for, they all have certificate of liabilities, right?
Yeah, they're all, they're all fully insured. In fact, uh, I, Isaac, our uh Deputy Solicitor um, has been really hounding these folks for all their certificates of liability, professional liability insurance, et cetera.
Just wanna make sure that, that, that we have that on record, okay?
Yes.
All right, uh, all right, thank you. And then uh Wayne, I know we had uh, there were some uh additional conversations, particularly retained into Resolution forty-four that you and I had. Um, and I guess, so how is everything in terms of with the grant agreement with the county? Are we locked in on, on that front now, or do, are, are there still, is there still paperwork that needs to be uh completed?
Uh, is Rebecca still on here? I think, I think we just received that paperwork this week. Uh, Rebecca, are you able to answer that question?
Uh, yep, I sure am, so we just got the, um, hey, Council again, um, we got the grant agreements uh yesterday, and I forwarded on to the law bureau for their review uh just to make sure that everything's fine before we can execute them. But we just got the, the grant documentation.
Okay, all right, um, all right, great. So then um, I'll, again, just one more time, if there's any questions or comments from any members of council on Resolution forty-four. Uh, and then again, you, and I think Nate, you did mention it was a fifteen percent D B E out of Steelton. Is that correct?
Correct, yes, correct, that's a W B E D B E out of Steelton, a small business also.
Okay, and again, the name of that business, just from my uh
Uh, H B Engineering.
That's fifteen percent.
Correct.
Thank you, um, I guess seeing none and hearing no additional questions or comments, I'd ask that Resolution forty-four be placed on to uh the next council agenda, and then just pending a quick review of uh the uh grant agreements from the county by legal before we uh move forward, so um do that, and then I guess the last resolution I have in my committee is Resolution uh forty-six of twenty twenty. It's a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Department of Homeland Security's twenty twenty Regional Catastrophic Preparedness Grant Program to fund projects that manage catastrophic incidents and improving, by improving and expanding regional collaboration for catastrophic incident preparedness. And I will turn that over to the administration for uh a brief uh summary.
Count, hello, Council, good evening, it's Rebecca Volmer again, Grant Manager for the city. Um, I can give you a brief summary, so FEMA has had a program in place for years. Uh, it is, it's a national catastrophic relief uh effort, and it's, it's been in place for a long time. Uh, it's called the, it's a regional catastrophic preparedness grant. Uh, it's called the, it's a regional catastrophic preparedness grant. They have, in light of the COVID nineteen pandemic, they have expanded the, the definition of crisis to include COVID nineteen and other pandemics. And they've added on an amendment of ten thousand, sorry, ten million dollars across the country. So it's a national grant for any municipality that meets a certain population threshold to apply uh, with a one million dollar ceiling for a grant ask. But the ask, uh, the grant is meant to encourage municipalities to come up with regional preparedness programs for pandemics that are innovative and different and have regional, um, buy-in. So that's the program. Uh, we, we asked for a resolution to apply for this grant in case we could find a project that worked for Harrisburg in our region. Um, because the, the due date is July fifteenth, and I know that Chief Enerline is online to talk to us about it some more. Uh, the idea might be for, and Chief Enerline can talk to us more, um, we're trying to find a project that fits the, the, the scope of the grant, and that could be to have testing for all emergency workers to, um, to be tested before they go out into the public and work.
All right, Chief, you want to provide any additional, uh, comments?
Sure, um, can't quite hear myself there. Uh, yeah, so it's, uh, this, this grant's actually built around the, uh, national framework, uh, the, the thirty-two core capabilities and the seven, uh, community lifelines that the, uh, the FEMA has come up with and, and actually started publishing in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. So as we looked at that, uh, a- and with the, the addition of the COVID, um, and with some of the things that we've learned already in, in the last four months, uh, with response and things that we've, we've ran into regionally from a COVID standpoint, uh, emergency workers have not been able to get the testing, uh, that we wanted in a timely fashion. Um, and I believe that we have a partner, um, here in the city, uh, and not UPMC at, at this point, uh, to partner with for potential, uh, COVID testing, which would fit in this framework uh, of, of the core capabilities. One of those is, is fire rescue EMS, um, and so this would be for, for, uh, police, for fire and for EMS workers throughout the region. We're looking at it from the, uh, the eight county region of the South Central, uh, Counterterrorism Task Force, um, which gives us a, 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 a good base to build from. Uh, the, uh, the grant is based upon, uh, communities that, there's only a hundred of them on the list, uh, that, that, that meet this criteria. Harrisburg being one of them in Pennsylvania. Uh, Carlisle's also included, Lancaster, York, uh, i- is also included. Uh, and they'll only accept one grant application from, uh, these regions. So we, we believe that we're the only ones applying for this. Uh, and that COVID testing, and I, I think what we're going to ask for, uh, a- as I do more research into this, to build a better grant application is that, uh, buying a testing machine that would be able to test for multiple different things. And, and currently at the hospitals, uh, the, the machines that they had to do the COVID testing, uh, that, that did normal testing, all they had to do was put a new cartridge in it to, um, to, to pick out the, the COVID, uh, virus. So we're looking to potentially get one of those machines that would be portable. Uh, the, uh, the, the folks who I'm thinking of partnering with are already in the process of building a couple portable COVID testing, uh, uh, trailers anyway, and this could then be used to test, uh, again, police fire EMS mobily throughout the eight counties in the South Central Task Force region, uh, with Harrisburg being the, uh, you know, obviously the, uh, the go-to for this. Uh, testing kits, you know, run at about thirty-five dollars for the rapid test. A- and again, we want to look and see what else we might be able to do with it. And again, it's building resiliency in our emergency responders. And so while COVID is a part of this, it's also looking at the resiliency, uh, of police fire EMS to respond to greater uh, emergencies, greater, uh, catastrophic events. Think flooding, tornadoes, uh, uh, hurricanes, things like that, that, that affect the entire region. And to keep our, uh, our, our police fire EMS uh, safe and healthy, this is one of the alternatives I think that, that works for us on this grant application. That was a lot and fast.
All right, well, thanks, Chief, for that, uh, that overview. Um, I guess I will uh, go to questions from council members. I'll, uh, again, I'll, I'll, I'll start with, uh, Council President, uh, Williams. Do you have any questions?
No, no questions, Chief, but thank you, uh, very much for identifying how you were qualified for that funding and what you would do if you would be accepted. Thank you.
All right, uh, Councilman Mattson, any questions?
No questions for me, thanks.
Okay, Councilwoman Green, any questions?
No, I don't have any question at this time. Thank you.
All right, uh, Councilwoman Daniels, any questions? Councilwoman Bowers, any questions?
No, thank you.
All right, and, uh, Councilman Allen, any questions?
No questions, but I think it's definitely worthwhile to go for this grant. Just want to say, let's, let's do our best to get it for sure.
Yeah. Okay, um, I guess, uh, seeing none, um, no, I'm, I'm familiar with, uh, quite a bit of this, uh, so, uh, I think it's a good idea, uh, and, you know, I guess, again, we're, we're applying, we'll see how, uh, it goes. And, uh, again, the, um, that was, so the, the cap on the grant was a million dollars, so that's, we're just given the authority to look into that. And, you know, it's going to be competitive across the country, so, uh, you know, glad that there's some collaboration with our, uh, our regional task force that, that hopefully, you know, our project can, uh, rise up, uh, through that process. Um, and, uh, I guess, seeing no questions from any other of my council members, I would ask that Resolution forty-six uh, be placed on the, uh, next council, uh, on the agenda for the next legislative council. Uh, so I can't even speak, the less, next legislative agenda, uh, for the next council meeting. Uh, and, uh, with that, I will turn it back over to you, uh, President Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Uh, Ms. Houston, is there any public comment or questions?
Not at the, not at this time.
Okay, if not, then I, I would ask for an adjournment, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Meeting's adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.